I call the Commissioners Meeting of June 30th to order. Welcome, everyone. Today, we are joined by our veteran, Paul Henry. He's a veteran of the Marine Corps. He's also a veteran. He fought in the Korean War, and we're glad to have him. And please, everybody, wish him a happy pre-ninetieth birthday. He is going to turn ninety next month. So, happy birthday to Paul. So Paul's going to lead us in the pledge, and then we welcome back Sharon Gardner from Bahai, Faith, to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O thou merciful God, O thou who art mighty and powerful, O thou most kind Father, these servants have gathered together, turning to thee, supplicating thy threshold, desiring thine endless bounties from thy great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure; they have no intentions save service to the world of humanity. O God, make this assemblage radiant, make the hearts merciful, confer the bounties of the Holy Spirit, endow them with the power from heaven, bless them with heavenly minds, increase their sincerity, so that with all humility and contrition they may turn to thy kingdom and be occupied with service to the world of humanity. May each one become a radiant candle, may each one become a brilliant star, may each one become beautiful in color and redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind Father, confer thy blessings, consider not our shortcomings, shelter us under thy protection, remember not our sins, heal us with thy mercy. We are weak, thou art mighty; we are poor, thou art rich; we are sick, thou art the physician; we are needy, thou art most generous. O God, endow us with thy providence. Thou art the powerful, thou art the giver, thou art the beneficent. Abdul Bahar.
Just remind everyone, we are still working with some new technology here, so be patient So last week, the Commissioners joined in a celebratory event in Harrisburg, celebrating the hundredth year anniversary of Utz Brands. And we just wanted to take a moment this morning to read the proclamation that we shared last week, because this is a pretty momentous occasion for the Utz Brand organization. Just a little history, Utz Brand was founded by Bill and Sally Mae, and they started with a $300 investment that's now turned into a national company with a $3.3 billion market capitalization. It has certainly put Hanover, Pennsylvania on the global map, as well as York County. So maybe what I'll do is I'll ask Commissioner Hope to read this, so I can scroll down, so the public can...
I'm happy to read this proclamation for Utz's hundredth year anniversary. Whereas, Utz began in 1921, when William and Sally Utz began making Hanover Home Brand potato chips in Hanover, Pennsylvania, and selling them to small markets in central Pennsylvania. Hanover Home Brand became Utz Potato Chip Company, Inc. in 1947, two years before building a large plant on Carlisle Street in Hanover to match their growing demand for their potato chips. Utz's increasing popularity allowed the company to break into the northeast and mid-Atlantic markets, and ultimately serve customers throughout the United States. Utz was the nation's largest privately-owned snack food company before it began trading publicly on the New York Stock Exchange under the Utz symbol. Utz produces more than 5.5 million pounds of snacks each week, about half of which are potato chips. Utz is a flagship snack food manufacturer and distributor, helping York County earn the distinction as snack food capital of the world. After a century of strong family heritage, Utz remains a model business that has a tremendously positive impact on the York County economy. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, would like to thank Utz for being a successful business in York County for 100 years, given its day in New York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the 30th day of June in the year of our Lord 2021, and it's signed by the Board of York County Commissioners. Congratulations, Utz Company.
Yeah, so thank you, Utz. And my personal favorite are the Grandma Utz potato chips. I hear they're made in Lard. I guess that's probably why I like them. Okay, so we will move on to item number five on the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, item number six.
I make a motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of the York County Public Works Department and P.S. Hill Landscaping, York Haven, Pennsylvania, to remove a log jam located at Bridge, Malmar, for 52 point 67, located over the south branch of Cudores Creek on the Heritage Rail Trail north of Days Mill Road, in a total amount of $13,640 paid by the York County Parks Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Cleveland Brothers, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for a Caterpillar 305E2 mini excavator for use by the Public Works Department for a total cost of $68,375 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Cleveland Brothers, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and one Caterpillar 299D3HF track loader with attachments for use by the Public Works Department for a total cost of $124,935 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Global Data Consultants, LLC, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for 42 Dell Thin clients for a total cost of $11,061.96.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of Adult Probation Department and York XL, York, Pennsylvania, to provide fiscal sponsorship and act as a 501(c)(3) to manage funds donated to the York County Wellness Courts for a total cost of $10,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the prison in Exxon, Scottsdale, Arizona, to provide a trial period for testing of body worn cameras from August 1st, 2021, to December 1st, 2021, and there is no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and Murray Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to provide broker services and insurance coverage for public entity employment-related practices liability, law enforcement liability, general liability, automobile liability, and property protection claims for a total cost of $831,140 for the period of June 30, 2021, to June 30, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know, Marcus, is a pretty big number, but I know we went out and looked for different insurance companies and...
Yes, it's actually about a 58% increase in our insurance costs, and that's tied to everything that's going on currently across the nation with law enforcement. There's several departments in the county that are covered under the law insurance portion of the policy, or Sheriff's Department probation. And because of that, it seems that there's an increase in insurance costs.
Right, but we did our homework as far as looking at cost, right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13.
I make a motion to award a construction contract to JVI Group, Inc. for the replacement in County Bridge Number 177, Baker Road, over the Little Conawoga Creek in Dover and West Manchester Townships, in an amount of $781,834.90. This project will be funded by the Transportation Improvement Plan as per the current funding distribution of 80% federal funds, 15% state funds, and 5% local funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I see John's ready to speak in the podium, so we'll turn it over to John.
Well, after Mark's bad news on your last motion about the cost increase, I just thought it was worth pointing out, on this particular bridge project, that the estimated cost of that project was $974,960. So that came in significantly under the estimate. So that's good news.
That's great news.
Good news.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Archives Department and Pro Shed Security, Paoli, Pennsylvania, to provide onsite shredding for a cost of $0.06 per pound for a period of August 1st, 2021, to July 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15.
I make a motion to approve a third amendment to the MOU between the County of York and the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau to address the funding for the current fiscal year and to address the funding for the next six months of the next fiscal year, which commences on July 1st, 2021. This third amendment to the MOU has been reviewed and approved by the York County Convention Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I've been on this board for several years, and I'll just make a comment. I think everybody knows, over the past probably year and a half with COVID, that hotel tax revenue that comes in from people staying at our hotels, tourism industry, has been hit probably one of the hardest. And I know in the first six months of COVID, when it hit, everything was shut down, and there was a lot of decrease in obviously revenue from the hotel tax. So this is just an amendment to get the CVB back on track, because tourism is a big industry in York County, and we're going to go after, you know, attractions and events to come in here to help our local economy, so I think this is a good deal.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
I make a motion to approve a fiscal year 2020-2021 Third Quarter Family First Transition Act invoice on behalf of the York County Office of Children, Youth, and Families to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Children, Youth, and Families, in the amount of $29,129 for the period of January 1st, 2021, through March 31st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 17.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the prison to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for a total grant amount of $150,000. This grant will support our medical assistance treatment program for individuals struggling with opioid addiction reentering the community from prison for the period of October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this motion and the next motion were both approved by the prison board that were discussed. I do want to do a, give a shout out to our Deputy Warden of Central Services and Treatment out of the prison, Val Conway. She's worked hard on this, and this will serve people coming out of prison who have addiction problems, and will help them reenter the community.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 18.
I make a motion to approve the extension of a grant application on behalf of the prison to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for a total grant amount of $314,483. This grant extension will support our medical assistance treatment program to supply vitriol for individuals struggling with opioid addiction reentering the community for the prison for the period of July 1st, 2021, through June 30, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to approve a grant agreement between the County of York on behalf of the DA's Office and Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority, Harrisburg, PA, for a total grant amount of $111,200 for the salary benefits, training, and equipment for an insurance fraud county detective for the period of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
Motion to approve Bruce Miller, Redline, Pennsylvania, to the York County Planning Commission to fill the remainder of the Region 7 southeastern region, term that expires on December 31st, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations to Bruce. It's nice to see a fellow Redline person on that authority. Item number 21.
Motion to approve and execute cooperation agreements between the County of York and the Redevelopment Authority of the County of York for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grants for the following projects as listed below in the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I know we have some folks here to speak about these, so go right ahead.
All right, good morning. One of my many hats is as Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority of the County of York. The motion that you have in front of you today is to approve three cooperation agreements between the county and the Redevelopment Authority, better known as RACY, for RACP grants. And RACP grants, as you know, and those listening at home may be aware, very competitive state grants for projects that promise significant economic or community impact or job creation. So we are very pleased to have this funding coming into the county. Not all RACP grants run through RACY, but the ones that do are typically achieved through a cooperation agreement with the county. The county, of course, is the entity that backs the Redevelopment Authority of the County of York, and so we need your blessing on these agreements as we move forward. At any given time, RACY has probably five or six active RACY grants, or RACP grants going on. We currently have a number of them that the county has approved cooperation agreements for in the past. The three that are in front of you today, the first is Keystone Kid Space. You currently have an agreement in place with Kid Space, but they fortunately have received an additional RACP award of $650,000, which brings their award to $2,650,000, so there'll be a revised agreement. The second project is the Markets of Hanover, which, if you haven't been there lately, are doing some really amazing improvements to their space, and they're receiving $1,500,500 for improvements and renovations down in Hanover. And then the third project is the YWCA of York, receiving just over $1.4 million, and Gene Truthheart is here from the YWCA of York to speak to that project in a little more detail.
Thank you, Silas. Good morning. Just want to thank the Commissioners, first of all, for your ongoing support of our organization. You've attended a number of events and given us some resolutions, and your financial support has also been very, very helpful. We are, as you know, one of the anchor nonprofits in York County. In a typical year, this is not one of those, but in a typical year, we provide programs and services for over 20,000 York County residents. We own eight properties in the city of York that were built between the turn of the century and the 1950s. They could use a little TLC. We also own Camp Canadian, which is 228 acres up in York Haven, which is more than 80 years old, and we have 150 campers with us this summer. So our projects are really focused on modernizing our spaces, making them more comfortable, also focusing on safety and accessibility. So they are certainly important projects to us. We have been able to secure our RACP match through our capital campaign, which is going on now through the end of the year, and also other donations. So just speaking on behalf of the CEO, one of the main outcomes for our organization is that this will help preserve and protect our assets. But most important, and I'm sure of interest to you, is that it will help us do better in our job to deliver on our mission of eliminating racism, empowering women, promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all, and that's serving children and youth, senior citizens, our members, families, and of course, the way in which we connect with the county often through victim, for our victims of violence as well. So, thank you.
Gene, what is your capital cane? Is it on right now?
Yes.
And what is your target?
Our target is $3.5 million, and we have raised $2.8 million, and our public phase is just going to be launching starting tomorrow.
Good.
Great. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 22.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department, CDWG Chicago, Illinois, for a Kodak document scanner for a total cost of $13,657.05.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 23.
Motion to approve a non-disclosure agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department, Shenandoah Communications Company, Virginia, for York County broadband discussion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 24.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-15, which endorses the use of a portion of the Heritage Rail Trail to be part of the 9/11 National, or NMT, National Memorial Trail, which will be a 1,300-mile trail that shall link the September 11th Memorial in New York City, the National Pentagon Memorial, and the Flight 93 National Memorial in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, as a tribute to those lost during the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, and just to update the committee on this, there is an organization, the September 11th National Memorial Trail Organization, and they have partnered, I'm going to read this because I don't want to leave any states out, they have partnered with rail trail organizations to connect, connect us all, New York City, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Washington DC, Virginia, West Virginia. And this is a system of trails and roads. It creates a triangle that is approximately 1,300 miles in length, and I certainly remember where I was on the day of September 11th, I'm sure we all do. So I think this is a great way to show our spirit of staying, sticking together as a community and a symbol of resiliency and character that we represent as a nation. And I would also like to mention that our local York County Rail Trail Authority is in favor of this. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 25.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-16, authorizing the county to declare an emergency to hire Crylon Corporation Somerset, Pennsylvania, to complete the emergency remediation work for Bridge Numbers 160 and 160A on Lake Road, Paradise, and Washington Townships.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know, maybe, Mark, and whenever we pass emergency, we're just, or John, we just have somebody coming in to take care of a project that isn't completed?
This is a construction termination issue with the contractor where we have uncompleted work, a DEEP violation citation, and a recent bridge inspection of the partially removed bridge, so it constitutes an emergency to get this work done before something else happens.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 27.
Motion to authorize the county engineer to negotiate a contract on behalf of the County of York with Crylon Corporation Somerset, PA, for the completion of the construction and remediation at Bridge Numbers 160 and 160A on Lake Road, Paradise, and Washington Townships, and to authorize Crylon Corporation to begin work immediately to complete the unfinished work and necessary remediation and unfinished work as required by the Pennsylvania DEEP.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I believe I flipped my number, so this is motion number 26, so just to be clear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 27.
Motion to approve the tax refund register 2021-03, authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $43,029.11.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 28.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of June 16th, 2021, totaling $27,629,396.43.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Marcus is a pretty big number for one week's distribution.
It was an expensive week. We had about $10.6 million in principal and interest payments on the county's outstanding debt. We included about $2.1 million in healthcare costs for the county's employees. There was about $2.6 million that was distributed to the municipalities and school districts for tax claim, and there was about $8.2 million that was paid to providers for our health choices program, was capitation payments, and then another $4 million in miscellaneous expenses.
Right, and our debt service usually falls every six months, so this is just normal.
Yep, we'll see another large payment in December, maybe December.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 29.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of June 23rd, 2021, totaling $1,829,426.26.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 30.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of June 30th, 2021, totaling $4,772,783.09.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No executive session since our last meeting. We have several distinguished guests here with us today. Wade from the Planning Commission is going to speak first and give an update on the strategic planning efforts from the County of York and the Planning Commission.
I agree.
Yeah, as long as, we'll just have to put it back in for salary board, sure. And Wade has a couple slides, so we'll just pause here briefly as he gets his... Oh, I guess I have to open up here. There we go. And I'll try to keep up with you. Okay?
And we'll slip, we'll slip through a couple of them pretty quick.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm Wade Gobrak with the York County Planning Commission, and just want to announce the Building a Better York County Initiative, which is a strategic planning initiative for the County of York. There's two main components. One is an internal assessment of county and county employees and processes and leadership. The other one is a community survey, which I would like to focus on today. Next slide. Next slide. And one more, I think. One more.
Here we go.
All right, so the countywide survey, this is an initiative that was funded, the survey was fully funded through the Powdermill Foundation. It is being administered through the Arthur J. Gladfelter Institute for Public Policy at York College, so that's the institution that will be administering the survey for us. So what is the survey? We're looking to reach out to all of the communities and all of the residents in York County. York County is about 911 square miles and very diverse, from the city of York to downtown Hanover, to Delta, some of the smaller boroughs within the county, and all of our rural townships within the county. So it's, it's very diverse. Many communities have their own priorities, so this is a very important step for the county to figure out what those priorities are. are. The survey questions, there's some demographic questions, there's questions about what are your priorities within your community? And then we also want to hear back, how's the county doing? What county services have you been using? Rate those county services and prioritize those county services as well. So it's very important that we want to hear back from you. Next slide. So when can you expect to see this survey? The surveys were mailed last week. There's a second mailing going out July 5, and then a third mailing on July 19. The mailed surveys will be sent to 1,500 randomly selected households throughout York County. This number was come up, we came up with the 1,500 households. The expected return response rate on the surveys should result in a statistically valid sample survey. So that, that's kind of our control group. And then we'll have an online survey that will be pushed out to and be available to all York County residents. And we're hoping to get, we would love to get 100% participation in that. That survey will be available at buildingabetteryoracounty.org. You can try clicking on that link. I think that one should open up. So we have a website at buildingabetteryoracounty.org. It's available in English. There's a Spanish translation available as well. And if you scroll down a little further, it'll give you the dates of the different mailings, and we have a counter on there when the online survey becomes available to all county residents. So get ready in a little over 12 days. We hope that you'll visit this website and fill out the application. If you can minimize that and go back to the PowerPoint and the next slide. So the survey opens to all county residents starting on July 13. It will be open for one month and will close on August 13. Some other places that you may see this, we're doing in the newspaper, I heard it announced on the radio. We have our landing page at buildingabetteryoracounty.org. We're also going to be working with many of the community organizations. We're partnering with York County Libraries to get the word out and make these available at the libraries, partnering with the Revs. And we're going to be at, this past weekend, we were at the Trey and Boo Memorial Basketball Tournament. We're going to be at First Friday, this Friday, hopefully the weather cooperates. And we'll also have a stand, I believe, in Memorial Hall at the York Fair. But we're going to be working with close to 200 community organizations to get the word out. So I encourage you to, to visit the website. There's information on there to reach out to us. If, if you can't get online, we're going to have handouts. We can make the surveys available in paper format as well. I believe that's it. There might be one more slide, but I think I covered that. Yeah, so we want to hear back from the public. Please speak up and let us hear your feedback on your priorities and what you think of the county services that are being offered. Any questions?
Just a big thank you to the Powder Mill Foundation for helping us make this happen with the survey. So we have a very generous philanthropic community here in York County, and we really do appreciate Powder Mill funding this for, for the county.
And one other thing with those funds, the survey, it takes about 15 minutes. There's a lot of information on there. It takes about 15 minutes to fill out. But with the funding from the Powder Mill, we're able to, those residents that fill out the survey can get in, enter into a drawing for one of five $100 gift cards to a local business. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. So up next, we have our friends and colleagues from the York County Economic Alliance. So I'm not sure if Silas will be the only speaker today, or if, okay.
I think so.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I'll have the presentation.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Okay. I'm working with the mouse here. Sorry. I'm having a little trouble with the mouse. I apologize. I. I might ask Nick to come up.
All right. Thanks for your patience.
Before I launch into this, I just want to share, I know by two weeks ago that the commissioners allocated $1.6 million of Rescue Act funds to the CHIRP program, which had been a state program administered by the county in partnership with YCEA. And the commissioners chipped in additional funding to that program so that we could fund all applicants. That funding is now all out the door. All the participants in that program should have their checks and have the money in hand. So thanks again for that additional allocation, and the money's out the door now. So turning to the Yoko Strong Recovery Task Force, I'm here today on behalf of the task force to provide an update. And Julia, do you control those, or do I control those?
I do.
Okay. Next slide, please. Just to refresh your memory and for those watching at home, in April 2020, the commissioners created the Yoko Strong Recovery Task Force, really in the earliest months of COVID, as a way to bring together subject matter experts in the community to provide recommendations to the county and to evaluate how we were doing in terms of our response to COVID up to that point. They were formed in late April, and by May 29, were asked to deliver recommendations to the county commissioners. That would cover three main things, how we could weather and mitigate the immediate crisis, so what short-term actions could we take? How to prepare and mitigate further resurgence or future waves of COVID. At that time, we didn't know that it would be nearly a year that we were dealing with, you know, business restrictions and social distancing. And then building a playbook for future pandemics and similar disruptions based on the things that we had learned throughout this process. That 60-page report included sector-specific recommendations. It was made public. It included 15 working groups, and each working group had recommendations, and then there were eight priority recommendations. And if you go to the next slide, to remind you, these are the ways in which the county commissioners allocated their CARES Act funding, and they were very closely aligned with the recommendations coming out of the Recovery Task Force. And here we are in 2021, if you go to the next slide, in a very similar situation, where we are a year past the initial report. We've reactivated the Recovery Task Force in 2021 and charged them again with coming up with a refreshed set of recommendations and other updates to that original report, and really taking a look back at the past year of what went well, what are the needs that are still out there, and trying to anticipate what are the needs in the future. On May 17, the task force submitted draft recommendations, and then we all had a full task force meeting on the 24th with all the task force members to share their recommendations between groups. And then during the past several weeks, we've taken all those recommendations, those notes and that input, and incorporated it into a updated report that will be shared with commissioners later this week, and will be available to the public at yokostrong.org. So once again, just like in 2020, we hope that the recommendations from this report can be used when thinking through the allocation of the $87 million in ARPA funds that the, that the county will receive. And next slide, please. So just a refresher that there were a number of committees and working groups covering a variety of different aspects of our community, everything from courts to economic development to tourism to technology to healthcare. So it's a really holistic look at the county's needs and our response to COVID. And I should thank the committee co-chairs who have committed their time, not just in 2020, during a really busy period for all these organizations, but also in 2021, to provide an update to this report and work on a relatively tight timeline to come up with meaningful recommendations. So the full task force report has dozens and dozens of recommendations, and in fact, some of the working groups provided full narratives, really documenting what the last year has looked like and what the path forward looks like as well. But there were a number of recommendations that either appeared across multiple working groups or rise to the top through discussion as priorities for the task force. So that's what I'll be focusing on today. You could, we're certainly welcome to review the full report, and I hope you will, and I hope the public will. But we also want to make sure that these priority recommendations get some attention. We also want to remind folks not directly involved in this process that these are recommendations and a report developed by the task force for the commissioners, not by the commissioner. So obviously, a next step is the commissioners having an opportunity to digest this information and consider how it lines up with other needs that you're aware of for the county. So next slide, please. So starting with priority recommendation number one, continuing to provide emergency relief to businesses and nonprofit organizations impacted by the pandemic and ongoing economic disruptions. We know that there's been a lot of progress in restarting our economy. We know that businesses are reopening after restrictions and social distancing. But we also know that, in particular, several of our sectors in our economy continue to be hard-hit. Others are still recovering from months of being closed or deemed non-essential. And so we see in the community, and particularly the business community, an ongoing need for support for small businesses and nonprofits. We also, just as we did under the CARES Act, see the opportunity to prioritize some of the, the folks, the businesses, the individuals who have been hit the hardest by the pandemic, including historically disadvantaged owners, small businesses, and then specific sectors such as hospitality, food, retail, arts, and tourism. And as the commissioners are aware, we've done some economic analysis with Fourth Economy that shows that those are the sectors really where there continues to be ongoing disruption. We also believe there's a great opportunity to continue providing support directly to nonprofits, especially those that serve vulnerable populations, that have been on the front lines of COVID and the response to COVID, the arts community, the tourism, and the recreation sectors. And then finally, startup businesses. Many startups, or I should say, many state and federal programs have boxed out businesses that have opened since COVID began. So a business that could be open now for 16 months wouldn't be eligible if they opened after, I think it was February of 2020. So we think there's a real opportunity and a need out there for businesses who have taken the risk of opening during a pandemic and are seeking some support now because they haven't received it from other sources. So that's recommendation number one. Moving on to number two. Continuing to invest in the enhancement of York County's emergency response capacity. Obviously, during any emergency, the county serves as a coordinating entity, certainly did during COVID, and it certainly does in other community emergencies. We should continue to invest in technological improvements to the Emergency Operations Center, ongoing improvements to the COVID hub site that was created in partnership with the Planning Commission, emergency services, and others during the pandemic, and enhanced sites that provide economic and community resources, such as Prepared York, which became very important to disseminating, disseminating information during COVID. Further, we should continue to prioritize and enhance outreach and to communities that are especially vulnerable, including many of those sectors and folks that were cited on the previous slide. We believe that bilingual marketing is still incredibly important. We've made a real commitment to that in our outreach over the last 18 months. And to continue to build those community partnerships with trusted institutions and leaders so that we're really reaching folks in a way that they trust and that they're going to act on. Slide three, please. Recommendation three is reactivating York County's tourism economy. You heard Commissioner Hoake's comments on the impact on hotels, and we know that there's been a, an effect tourism sector-wide, not just in York County but elsewhere. So those effects continue to be felt. County resources can focus on jump-starting the tourism economy through grant programs that prioritize tourism assets, so all the businesses that support the tourism industry, enhancing marketing efforts and making investments in capital projects with high tourism value. In particular, we saw that the outdoor economy of trails, parks, heritage sites, and open space proved to be resilient, one of the pieces of the tourism economy that was available during the pandemic. Believe it'll be a critical part of our tourism recovery and our general economic recovery. Recommendation number four is one that's very familiar to the commissioners, and I'll speak on more in just a moment. Implementing the Yoko Fiber Countywide Broadband Strategy to Continue Closing the Digital Divide. Of course, during the pandemic, the importance of reliable, fast, and affordable internet access became one of the major lessons learned, and things that became very apparent even in the earliest weeks of the pandemic. Broadband has emerged as one of the key factors in a community's ability to weather the pandemic, but also to position it well for recovery. And counties across the country right now are talking about how they can get the ball rolling on broadband work. Fortunately, in York County, we were proactive in our use of CARES funds to begin the process of expanding countywide broadband, and, and we have the opportunity now to continue the work using Rescue Act funds, private investment, and federal grants. So as broadband deployment, or given that broadband deployment is complex and time-sensitive, we recommend swift action to allocate funding. Onto recommendation number five, which is enhancing the capacity of public and nonprofit profit social service providers to deliver critical resources and support to county residents. We know that during the pandemic, part of our important public health and social safety net was the nonprofit institutions in our community that interface with human services at the County of York. And enhancing the ability of those organizations to work together and interface with the county and provide a more seamless and efficient interaction with people that enter that system is really important. So we know that those, that the pandemic strained our social safety nets, placed a disproportionate burden on our vulnerable populations, and will have lingering mental health, social, and occupational implications. We believe, the task force believes this is the moment to invest in our capacity for community care coordination through both the systems change that that requires, but also some technological investment to drive improved health and human service outcomes in York County. And this is one of those where there's a lot more details in the full report on what this could look like, but we believe this is an opportunity for the County of York and its nonprofit partners to collaborate. Priority recommendation number six is continuing, and I should say, there's only eight, so I'm not like a six out of 50 here. We're getting close. Number six is continuing to prioritize programs that provide rent and mortgage relief. That same economic data that I cited earlier also allowed us to flesh out some of the numbers around the number of York County residents who are behind on their rent, behind on their mortgage payments. There's around 8,000 renters who have, are more than a month behind on their rent, and 13,000 homeowners that are more than a month behind on their mortgage payments. We know that as moratoriums are lifted in the coming months, the nation overall faces a potential eviction and foreclosure crisis that will deeply impact households. Of course, that has a trickle-down effect to straining our social service networks and threatening our economic recovery. York County already serves as a significant conduit for federal and state programs for rent relief, and that work is very effective, and it's helped thousands of households already and will continue to do so. But there's no similar program from the federal government that provides relief to mortgage holders. So we think there's an opportunity to continue to evaluate opportunities to provide similar financial support and technical assistance to homeowners who have been left out of those programs to date. Recommendation seven is fostering clear pathways to employment for new or displaced workers. We know that the pandemic created disruptions to traditional workforce, traditional employment. York County has fared better than many parts of the state, many parts of the nation in terms of unemployment, but we still fall behind our 2019 employment prior to COVID. We have thousands of employees who are exiting the workforce, either because they're frustrated or because they don't see a path forward in their careers. And there are significant obstacles for employers trying to hire at full capacity, which if you drive up Interstate 83 and you look at the billboards, 75% of them right now are about sign-on bonuses and starting wages. So our, our employers are really struggling as well. The county has an opportunity to support ongoing rapid reemployment programs, some of which are active now, some of which could really be scaled up. of which are active now, some of which could really be scaled up. Reentry programs, and I know one of the earlier actions of the commissioners related to reentry, community college job skills trainings, apprenticeships, and partnerships with schools to help graduating seniors find meaningful living wage employment. We believe, you know, this isn't, it's also about, it's about equity and quality of life for our residents, but it really is also about economic recovery as our businesses try to get back to full capacity and hire great employees that are going to stay with their business for the long run. And then I think we're on the final recommendation, which is focused on childcare. Investing in programs that expand childcare capacity and the childcare workforce. We know that prior to COVID, we already had a squeeze on the number of available seats in childcare centers in York County. We had 6,800 fewer available seats than needed. During the past year, that situation has grown worse as either centers closed or they had to restrict their capacity because of social distancing guidelines or because of lack of demand. So we have seen that number go up by about 3,400 seats, exacerbating the situation that already existed. We know that this is a workforce issue as much as it is a quality of life or equity issue, because we've seen nationally 2 million women leave the workforce, a million women in the ALIS population, which are women who are working but sort of right around the poverty line. And in the past 10 months, more than 60% of women nationally have reported reduced working hours due to providing childcare at home, because either childcare access wasn't available or schools were closed or working, or schools were remote. And so we believe this is a huge issue that warrants attention. This was a recommendation in our 2020 report. The commissioners prioritized funding to childcare facilities through the Restart Grant Program. We believe that was influential in keeping many childcare centers open. We also made some direct allocations, or you also made some direct allocations to nonprofits that support the childcare industry in 2020. So I think we have been paying attention to this, probably one of the counties that acted earliest on childcare support, and I think we have another opportunity again with Rescue Act funds.
And I think, I think I recall from the Fourth Economy Report, there are actually 400 seats that are completely eliminated, correct?
Right. From closures of childcare centers, there's 400 of that 3,400 that are just gone right now, 3,000 that we hope will come back. And the more childcare centers that we can keep, you know, fully staffed and running, the more of that 3,000 will come back. But if more of those close, that 400 number starts to go up again.
Another slide?
Yeah. So in conclusion, we want to thank the commissioners for creating the task force in 2020, for taking the recommendations very seriously in 2020, and now reactivating the task force to provide this new report and these updated priority recommendations. We hope that you'll use these to inform your decision-making over the next several months as you decide how to allocate CARES Act funds, and of course, the task force members, many of whom you work with regularly already through their organizations, stand ready to assist with the implementation of any of these recommendations. And then finally, I want to thank my fellow task force members for committing their time and expertise to this work, and again, take, making time in a very busy year to provide this public service. So with that, I'll thank you and ask if there's any questions.
No, I think the Board of Commissioners would also echo your comments for the community leaders and subject matter experts that have continued to provide counsel to us as we navigate the funding from CARES last year and now as we navigate the American Rescue funding. So a big thank you from the Board of Commissioners as well.
Thank you. And the last slide is just where the public will be able to find this report at yokostrong.org. The full text of 2020's report is already there. As I said earlier, the 2021 report will be posted this week. We'll also make that directly available to the commissioners. You can also view those economic data slides that we referenced several times. We have two sets of data from 2020 and 2021. And if you are still looking for resources for your business or your nonprofit or individual resources for finding a job, then you can also access this site and get to those resources in English and Spanish. And that should be the last slide.
Okay.
And then for my next presentation on the different...
Yeah, no, but it's on the same, it's the same.
Is that that one?
This one?
Yep. All right. So taking off one hat and putting on another hat, the commissioners also created the Yoko Fiber Broadband Task Force, and the YCA has been happy to help support that work and help facilitate the task force. As you know, the task force was created to implement the plan that was created under the CARES Act, and you could go to the next slide. Again, just want to start by thanking those who have been involved. We have several county employees who are members of the task force, but also folks from education, utilities, health, economic development, education. So a great background here and a great group of people who have been helping to advise us along the way. So the vision for Yoko Fiber is to create a middle mile network, and we'll show you that middle mile network in a moment, to serve as a platform for last mile connections to homes and businesses via fiber, fixed wireless connections. And our vision is pretty simple, that every household and business in York County should have access to affordable, high-quality internet if they so wish. We know that's a simple vision, but one that's very complex and will take some work to get there. So the background on this is, and the commissioners know this well, under the CARES Act in May 2020, the Yoko Strong Recovery Task Force identified broadband infrastructure for all residents as one of its primary priority recommendations. In August 2020, the commissioners approved allocating funds to create a feasibility study that looked countywide at our existing infrastructure and plotted out what a countywide network could look like. That was completed in December 2020. And then in tandem with that, a little later in the year, on October 2020, the commissioners approved up to $1,500 and CARES Act funds to create a pilot project underneath the Heritage Rail Trail to create a fiber backbone through Southern York County. And then in December 2020, although broadband came to our attention through COVID, we were also writing our county's economic action plan at that time. And so December 2020, the economic action plan, which also includes broadband as a key countywide priority, was approved as part of the comprehensive plan. So broadband is not, is a response to COVID, but is also part of our 10-year vision for economic development in York County. So the middle mile network, which is what's shown on the right, is the design that came out of our feasibility study. It's based on the location of priority institutions such as every school in the county, 911 infrastructure, EMS, fire, police sites, major clusters of employers. And the resulting network is seven rings of fiber, and you could think of these as the interstate highway system for fiber in the county. And then knowing that off of all these major rings of dark fiber, there's local roads, for lack of a better word, that create those local networks that actually tie to homes and businesses and the people using the fiber internet. We look at this as a way to encourage private investment in parts of the county where it hasn't occurred before, in part because extending this dark fiber into these underserved areas lowers that economic threshold for a private provider to be able to come in and provide service to areas that are densely populated and represent a little bit less of a market than where they would prefer to go in most cases. So private providers will be able to access this network and then provide fiber to homes and businesses. That relationship will be through either leasing the fiber from the County of York or participating in revenue sharing. And that's, and you'll see that's part of our recommendations. So building this network is the priority of the Yoko Fiber Task Force and really an implementation of our strategy. The pilot project, for those of you who aren't as familiar, 16 miles from downtown New York, near York College, the whole way down the York Heritage Rail Trail to the Maryland border in New Freedom, with two wireless antennas at Hanover Junction and Brillhart Station to serve trail users and prove the functionality of the fiber that's now buried underneath the rail trail. Next slide. We undertook this project on a very limited tight timeline and also in the middle of winter, so a couple of times we were thrown off by snow, freezing temperatures, things like that, but we got this project done. And the next slide shows a happy moment when we were able to be joined by the commissioners and stand there in front of one of the antennas along the completed fiber network and celebrate for a moment. So the pilot project's now complete, and that gives the county a great opportunity to leverage that pilot project moving forward. The other thing that we're working on before I move on to the task force recommendations is a demand survey, because if you look at the mapping of York County from the FCC and even the Census, it shows that there is widespread broadband access across York County and that the speeds are very high. We know from talking to our school districts, from talking to business owners, residents throughout the county, that that's just not the case. So we've been running a demand aggregation study that's open to all York County residents and business owners and available at yokofiber.com to better document the current prices of internet in York County, where it's accessible, where it isn't, how it's being used, what kind of service people would like to see, and what speeds they would like to see, and what speeds they're actually getting. There's a speed test as part of this survey as well. So I do encourage anybody listening, anybody that hasn't completed it, to go to yokofiber.com and complete it, or share it with your friends and family who you know don't have internet access but would love to have it. Next slide, please.
I believe we encourage folks to do it at the...
Yes. Yep. If you have home internet access, that's the place to do it because you can test your speed. But we also encourage people who don't have home internet access, you know, to take it on their phone, and because we'll get your address and we'll know, you know, you're coming from a part of the county that doesn't have home internet. So we have 792 surveys completed to date. We of course want to get several thousand out of this process, but we will leave this survey open for the next four months or so. So far, some early findings, 88% of our people completing the survey had indicated a lack of service altogether or dissatisfaction with their current internet speeds or prices. We're more concerned, frankly, about the ones that don't have service, because I would gather, if you ask anybody if they're happy with their current telephone or internet or cable provider, they're probably going to say no. So we know that some of that's just dissatisfaction in general, but there are a lot that are indicating they have no service at all. Up to 50% of the respondents in several of our service areas experience average internet speeds lower than the speed advertised by their provider. So they're paying for a certain amount of download and upload speeds, and then they take the speed test and it's significantly lower, so they're not achieving that on a daily basis. And obviously, that's been a complaint in some of the open-ended questions on the survey. So we have hundreds at this point of comments from people, you know, giving their feedback on their lack of access or their dissatisfaction with internet. But the two things that become very apparent when you read across the comments is that there's, there's two themes. Current prices are too high, or they're, the speeds are too low, or both, and the access that there is unreliable. So it could be down at key moments, and when you're working from home or studying from home as a student, or, you know, on your doctor's appointment that you spent a couple months trying to get, and your internet drops, that causes real frustration with county residents. The second is that there's no current internet access. That's sort of the standard that we're trying to address. But the other one is that people really do want to have choice between providers, and they believe that will bring down prices, which basic capitalism, a little bit of competition, will help bring down a price and provide better customer service and a better product. But because most of the fiber in the county is built privately, whoever builds that fiber is the sole entity that has access to it. That's the benefit of having publicly built dark fiber that can be made available to multiple providers and create some of that competition for people who are, you know, right now faced with one choice or no internet access. So we hope to learn a lot more about this over the coming months. If you go to the next slide, Commissioner, you can see some of the detailed information we're getting. So this is just southeastern York County. Every dot is a completed survey, so you can see we're getting some really good representation, even in places where we know there's limited internet access. If you click on one of those, and you can't actually do that on the screen, but in our software, if you click on one of those pinpoints, it will bring up like the address, what the current speed is, do they want internet, do they not want internet, what are they paying for internet, what are they willing to pay? So it's very data-rich. It's good for us in terms of our planning, but it's also the kind of information we can make available to private providers to demonstrate that there is a market. So if somebody's looking at southeastern PA and they're saying, or southeastern York County and saying, oh, there's no real customer base there, we'll be able to take this aggregated data and share it and say, no, there's significant demand and people want this level of service and they're willing to pay X, and really be able to drive some of the future of this work. So now on to the bigger recommendations that the task force is making, and these also relate back to the recovery task force as well. But we are recommending that the county allocate $25 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds to implementation of the Yoko Fiber Plan, and you've just seen the main components of that plan. But packaged within that $25 million request would be design and construction of middle mile rings four, five, and six. I'll show you those on a map in just a moment with some costs. The task force has prioritized those rings because they're the parts of the county with the least service right now, and they also can leverage the 16 miles of the pilot project that are already built. And we believe that York County is well-positioned to use these funds because ARPA has said that broadband is one of the key uses of these funds. That's the intention, and that we've already made significant investment in 2020, not just in our pilot project, but also in planning what this all looks like and what the cost could be. The second piece of this would be inventorying and evaluating county-owned and leased 911 towers for future wireless deployment. Using existing infrastructure may help us deploy wireless faster. And also, as we build out the Yoko Fiber Network and some of the wireless opportunities there, it may help us address the needs of 911 in the future, and there may be some future savings there that we'd like to evaluate. The third piece of this package would be designing and implementation, implementing two wireless networks for the city of York and the Hanover metro areas, so not just Hanover, not just York, but the areas surrounding them. The reason for this is that we continue to see significant digital divide in urban areas as well as rural areas, but the difference in the urban areas is that there may be fiber present, but there's other barriers to accessing it, like the home isn't wired for it, like the landlord hasn't signed up for it yet. So moving to a wireless network in our urban settings allows anybody to access those And then number four, the fourth piece, is really leveraging the existing pilot project that you already have. And so issuing an RFP for a private provider to create fiber-to-the-premise networks along the county's existing pilot project and generate revenue for the county through leasing or revenue-sharing agreements. This would not be a contract. This would be an RFP just to see, gauge interest of providers in doing this, and frankly, ask them what investment they would bring to the table and what that revenue-sharing agreement could look like. So although each of these is a specific task, we all see it as part of the next step in advancing the Yoko Fiber strategy. And just to close that thought before I open up for questions, the next slide shows the middle mile network with those three southern York County rings called out for you. You can see it's, you know, roughly Red Lion School District, southeastern school district, southern, and then the areas west of 83. These would also show up in the census mapping as the areas of our county with the lowest internet access. During our feasibility study last year, we did preliminary costs on these three rings. You can see that the costs are split between engineering and construction, but total just over $18 million. That's a price that was given to us, you know, six or eight months ago. And of course, by making an allocation of ARPA funds, that allows us to move forward, but then any contracts for engineering or construction would still come back before the commissioners for approval and would be publicly bid as are, as are all those contracts. And I don't know if I have another slide or not. Nope, I don't. So if you're watching at home, yokofiber.com has all this information, and take that demand aggregation study. Now take the commissioners' questions.
I have, I have, I do have a question. See if I can get back here. Whoops. I may need Nick's assistance. I may need your assistance with this. The slide that had the recommendations, would it be, and they're fantastic recommendations. Would it, number four, would it be an RFP or an RFI?
Well, I think we could talk about that with Michelle and Mark and try to figure out which one. I frankly, in looking at what other communities have done, it's almost been a mix of the two. Some have been RFI's, some have been RFP's.
Do you have another?
No, go ahead.
I have two questions. One's philosophical. When you're, when you're talking about broadband and broadband expansion, expansion in York County, which I think is a great thing, I think the federal government and state government has been promoting this, you know, where they get the idea that York County is... you know, where they get the idea that York County is fully, you know, providing their services, ridiculous to me. But the philosophy behind this and moving forward in the broadband expansion is to provide other providers who are in the business of, you know, providing their service to have the availability to expand into different parts of the community. Because to me, this is a marketing situation where people may not have expanded down to southeastern Pennsylvania because of population and it's not, you know, profitable to them to go ahead and expand to those areas. So our philosophy is really to provide access to other providers to provide this access to businesses and homeowners and schools.
Yes, that's, it's a twofold, though. That's the first part of it. The first part is, we are creating a platform for private companies to do what they do best, which is provide internet. We don't think the county needs to be in the business of being an internet service provider. But the other part of it is, if you allow a company to have access to your dark fiber, you can put stipulations to that, and you can say, you know, if you're going to enter ring four, five, or six, and you're going to go into some of these rural areas, we want you to have X number of coverage, we want you to, you know, connect to X number of households, we don't, you know, some of the more predatory practices, you can, you have control over that because they're relying on you for being able to light up their network. And then the other piece of it is the revenue generation. So you can say, you know, "We took a risk and we invested our public funding in creating this network, now we're going to derive revenue from it to pay the county back or use that revenue for other sort of things." So I think a provider coming in and responding to an RFP is going to be able to outline for you, here's what we think we can deliver for that service area, here's what that public-private partnership looks like in terms of how much private capital we're bringing to the table, how much we're going to be able to pay to the county out of our revenue, and then you'll be able to have a conversation with them to say, like, "We want certain things out of that arrangement." If, without building that middle mile, you're not part of that conversation at all, which is fine where it's working, but we just know it's not working across a large swath of the county.
Yeah, I think tying into that, I mean, certainly doing this helps make York viable to telecommunications companies, right, to invest in here. And to your point, if we don't make ourselves viable for investment, then those people who are underserved or not served are not going to have access to broadband.
Right, and as the work that York County has done on this has gained attention, we've had lots of inquiries from private providers asking, "Are you going to issue an RFP? When can we have an opportunity to, you know, discuss providing service?" So there is a demand out there that you've created by investing in this.
Which is good. And the other question is, this may be a little technical, but when I look at the map and the rings, the rings are disproportionate as far as area, and one of the rings looks gigantic and one of the rings looks really small. I don't understand IT, and I'd be the first one to admit it, I'm older, but how do they define the rings so one is, like, gigantic and one's small? Is it population geography or what?
It's not geography, it's demand. So each one represents roughly the same amount of demand points. So you see, like, ring two, that takes in portions of the city of York, Springitsbury, but then that 83 corridor, all that industry there and everything, that's roughly the same amount of demand points as ring one, just taking in, you know, very rural part of, you know, the Pinchot-Warrington area.
Okay, so it's demand by?
It's demand points.
Okay, right, it didn't make sense to me.
And this is highly adaptable, too. So if you build ring five and that provides service now, there's nothing to say you can't build. On your dark fiber segment that can access to, you can adjust these based on future needs. So if for some reason, the corridor along the south, 83 south sees significant development, and there's a new demand for fiber getting to those industries, you can extend the network. There's nothing that says, like, this is how it always has to be. And even if you build out the southern York County one and you get to the northern York County rings, there'll be lessons learned along the way with those first three rings that I think you can, you know, be flexible in how you develop it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Silas?
Silas, in rings four, five, and six, how many towers are anticipated to be used for that?
So, we don't know yet. That would be what they do in the engineering phase, is sort of figure out what that balance is between aerial, underground, fiber, and then wireless. We don't know yet.
Okay, so any of the costs associated with right-of-ways or tower building is not inclusive into these costs right now, correct?
No, it's not inclusive. This assumes a worst-case scenario. This assumes that you have to build everything as fiber, and there's no towers. Towers actually bring down the cost because instead of acquiring right-of-way easements, burring, you know, trenching, doing all that, and pole attachments, you're putting a wire, you're putting a tower and you're casting a signal, which in the long run is cheaper. So if we can identify some spots in the network to be able to do that, it actually brings these costs down. The other piece of it, when it comes to towers, is that we think that this will serve as the backbone for future towers, and that a lot of the providers that come in and propose how they would bring fiber to the home there are going to say, "Okay, maybe in Delta, we can do, we're going to do actual fiber to the home, but when we get outside of Delta in the Peach Bottom, we're going to put a tower up and cast across a certain area." Because when you're in those really rural areas, there's no economics that are going to ever make it viable to run fiber to, like, every, down every dirt lane to every house in the county, it's just not. So that's where I think you're going to see the deployment of those, but those would be the private providers doing those. But one of the things we'll ask them to do is look at, are there opportunities to do towers along these routes where we can save money?
Are you going to get with 911 to find out, I mean, they have a map of the tower locations, and I know that we own four towers and I believe we lease 22, for a total of 26. So how fast or how soon do you think that information may be available to you? Because that would probably decrease the cost for a lot of different reasons, not only for the broadband portion of it, but also for the fact that we could save money on the leases of the towers, which is only going to add more money, you know, at the end of the day. So when do you anticipate being able to get that information?
I mean, I think if we know we want to move in this direction, we can get our consultants lit, you know, who are the technical people in all this, to meet with the 911 center folks and start talking, having the technical conversation about where they're at, what we can do. And I do think it's going to be both ways, and in some ways, those towers might be able to leverage this, but I think this is also going to be able to leverage some of those cost savings that you were referencing, because maybe we don't have to lease as much infrastructure as we currently do. But I don't see any reason that conversation couldn't happen pretty soon.
So that would be something that would be vetted through the engineering phase?
Right, yeah, I mean, we would need lit and catapult our consultants to have that technical conversation with them.
And your recommendation was, I think, whatever it was for, some, up to 25 million of the, or money we've gotten.
Right.
And that would be for a project that would take over three years to build out, or what?
Yeah, we would anticipate this would take at least three years to build out. The ARPA funds technically allow you to allocate funds that are used up to five years from now.
Right.
So there's a three-year period that we would really be shooting for, but unlike the CARES Act where it was like, you get to last day of December and you're not supposed to, supposed to be totally done with every project. It was really a five-year window here. We don't want residents to be waiting five years to get better internet, so we would be expediting this. But the reality is, when you're talking pole attachment agreements, easements, all the infrastructure, it's a long process, which goes back to that recovery task force recommendation that says, "If we're going to go down this road, the time to move forward is pretty much now, so we can get our experts in permitting to start working on it, start locking in some of the supply chain on stuff that we know, as other counties get their act together, this broadband, fiber, and electronics are going to be in high demand." We want to start locking some of that stuff in now.
So I would ask my fellow commissioners to entertain a motion to allocate $25 million of the American Rescue funding, up to $25 million of the American Rescue funding, to further these task force recommendations, with the caveat that any bidding or engineering, that all of those things have to come back to the board of commissioners for approval.
All right, Julie, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second the motion.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There is one question. And Mark, we do already have the first allocation of the ARPA funds already in the bank. Yeah, okay, that's all I have.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Just remind everybody, Silas mentioned it, and so did Wade, but please, if you can, take the demand aggregation study when the community survey is available for the strategic plan, July 13th, please take that and encourage your friends and family to do it. And now we will open up for public comment. I do know that we have many guests here today. Please, if you haven't signed the registry, that's right outside the door, please sign that, first and last name, and list your municipality. So we'll open up for public comment. If you could just state your first and last name, your municipality, and overall content of what you're going to speak about, and then, Michelle is our expert timekeeper, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Dave Christensen. I'm a supervisor for Franklin Township, York County. The reason I'm here is because of the recent debacle of the election in York County. I think it's a form of voter suppression. All persons who are registered to vote should have that right, and should never be denied that right. In this past election, we had a problem with that. And I think part of the problem is there weren't enough ballots printed. And it favored one party over the other. In other words, there were more ballots not printed for one party than there were for the other. Now, I've heard that this is based on the last three primary election, how many ballots are printed. However, we had a couple hot-button issues in this election in the form of referendums that drew more people in, and I think that should have been taken into consideration. And it is sad that I've had people come to me and complain they walked away and didn't get the chance to vote, and weren't able to come back and vote later. That should never, ever happen in any election in this state or in this country. Now, my question to you is, what steps are being taken to ensure that this won't happen again? And are the person or persons who are responsible for this debacle going to be held accountable? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other comments from the public? Again, just to remark, if you could state your name and your municipality.
Good morning, David Brinton, Fairview Township. I have two things. With regard to the planning commission, I live about two miles away from Cumberland County border, so I try to represent the northern part of the county and seeing that we get our fair share of things up there. So one of the things I'd be interested in seeing is with the expansion of Amtrak, a train down from Harrisburg to York, down to Baltimore to Washington DC. I think that would be very helpful for things, and I know I would use it quite a bit. With regard to rail trail, we don't have a rail trail up in the northern part of the county. I'd like to see some interest in, or what we could do up there to get us some recreation up in the northern part of the county. And also with the fiber optics, I would hopefully like to see some of that put up in the northern part of the county so that, you know, we can use that to our benefit up there. I'd also echo the, my second part would be on the elections office. I would also echo my concern about that. I was one of the precincts that did not have enough ballots on Election Day, and over the years, I've had some issues with the elections office and how it's been administered. So I'd really like to see some changes be made there, and I appreciate your investigation into that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment?
I'd just like to say we are, oh, go ahead.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but just state your name and municipality, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Snyder, and up till this year, judge of elections for Springsberry Township. And we two, my friends there that are part of the board of elections, we two had problems with the election during the 2020 election and the past election. Now, the 2020, we had the provisional ballot problem, and that was provisional ballots come in and they're usually green. Green, and there's three sets, there's envelopes, provisionals, and anyway, they came in, in white ballots, and not, they're usually separated from the regular ballot. Well, they came in the machine with the regular ballots that are white with the white provisionals. And one of the issues that happens is the judges usually gets several boxes of information that they can review. They get the poll books, they just get the ballots, they get different things three days before the election. And what we do is, we go over our notes and we make sure we have those things, because on Election Day, it's crazy when you get in there. I mean, you know, we open so early, we have to set everything up, so during the judges' training, they said, "We have a request to put some of these, some of this information you usually get in the machines so you can look at them that day." Every judge put their hand up, said, "No, no, don't do this, because we have to look at this, we have to put tabs on things, we have to get it organized." And with that, this provisional ballot thing would have been caught. And Election Day, everybody's bringing food in, setting up, you know, it's not just the election. And so, it's crazy, and we happened to recognize that in Springsberry Township. I kept looking around saying, "Where are my ballots, where are my ...?" Because they're green, so obviously, you know, I was looking for them. They found them in one of the machines with the regular white ballots. Some people did not find them and called to get some and use those in the machines with the voters. And guess what? They don't work. They're not made the same way the ballots are. So all those ballots, again, were not counted. So, I mean, we see this stuff happening, and we tried to run this thing, so, I mean, we only get there two times a year, it's not that we're working on this all year. So every little bit that can help us carry this election is important, and I heard from some of the other judges this year, people didn't show up, some judges didn't show up, and you have to remember, all of these people that are volunteering are retired, most of them, because a lot of people don't get the day off and they don't get paid. So they're over 60, and a lot of them have been away from the office, like myself, I've been away 20 years. And you just are not that computer literate. I mean, you can do emails, Facebook, text, but...
Ms. Snyder, you're over your three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just wrap it up.
All right, thank you very much, just so we address some of these situations.
Sure, I did just want to clarify, there is a reason, so every ballot has a unique barcode on, and provisionals have a special barcode so that they don't, aren't able to get scanned through the machine on Election Day. So they were counted, but that's done as a safeguard to ensure somebody doesn't vote twice. So I just wanted to make sure that was...
But provisionals can't go through the ballot.
They can't go through the scanner on Election Day.
And they weren't, see, they were using them that way. They weren't handing them in. They thought they were normal ballots, because they were white.
Right, but the machine kicks out provisional ballots.
Right.
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure we are clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comment?
I just wanted to remind you, we're off Monday for July 4th, it'll be July 5th.
And we thank you all for coming in and sharing your comments with us. I'll close. Again, we'll wish everyone a happy July 4th, whatever you're doing out there, even if you're just resting, relaxing at home. So enjoy the holiday weekend, and if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned in the meeting today signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and no retirement board today, but... Opposed, we are adjourned, and no retirement board today, but we do have salary board, so we will move on to that.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 16, 2021 salary board meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number two.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or as set forth in York County employee handbook or York County policy manual for the following departments and row offices as listed below, with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and I could have a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and again, everyone have a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend.